I would be in the flag of the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in the wisdom and liberty and justice for all.
If there is anybody from the public who wants to or wishes to make a comment to the board, they will need to go over to the table over there on the wall and read the script and fill out the form to make a public comment. At the end, we will reserve about thirty minutes for public comment, but you only get three minutes to speak on your topic. The board will not respond unless the chair allows it. Okay, consent agenda. After discussion was held by the board, a motion was made in a second to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Okay, uh, new introductions. Andy Wicks, our new county engineer. Andy, welcome aboard. Anything that you want to say to the board?
Nothing big. I'm excited to be here, happy to hit the ground running.
Got moved in?
Got moved in, yeah. Still working on names. It's a big team, but yeah.
You have a good team out there.
Absolutely.
They'll help you.
Welcome aboard, Andy.
Excuse me, back here again in the future.
I'm planning on being here weekly. Yeah.
We got some other places to go.
A lot of ongoing projects, so yeah, still trying to get my feet under me.
Exactly. So.
And I think you've had several of your department members that have really stepped up to fill in and like Jody and Andy and Mitch.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Got to meet with the fleet team this morning. Shawna introduced the team to me there and yeah, super impressed with the team and yeah.
Well, awesome. So you're a team now.
Okay, Jody Marsh, project manager, secondary roads, public hearing for the proposed road vacation of a portion of Two Hundred and Eighth Street on the west line of section two dash seven or two dash T seventy-five N dash R forty-two W Potawatomi County, Iowa and sign resolution sixty-five twenty-five regarding the final order on road vacation.
I'll make motion to open the public hearing on vacating a portion of Two Hundred and Eightieth Street.
Second.
Discussion. Any discussion then? Rule call.
Chairman Bell.
Aye.
Supervisor Wickman.
Aye.
Supervisor Miller.
Aye.
Supervisor Shane.
Aye.
Supervisor Dorgensen.
Aye.
Okay, anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Can you come up here and give your name and address for the record?
The Eastman is involved.
Okay.
Closing.
We need your name.
Albie Rodenberg.
Okay, Albie Rodenberg and your address.
I'm in agreement on closing that as long as I.
Can I get your address?
Pardon?
Your address?
My address is two eight two five three Honeysuckle Road.
Get that, Mary Ann. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I'm in agreement on closing that, the balance of that road as long as I can receive a easement in and out access to the property that's already there, the balance of my property and so on. And Dustin is in agreement. We talked and he was in agreement with it as long as, uh, with the situation of we agreed on this and so on. And I guess that's about it and so on. Has been, but I think it should be surveyed so everybody knows exactly where it is and then, and then we would both, both parties would share that cost and so on. That's, I guess that's about it. And yes, then Jody kind of helped with that. That's all I can say.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So as it is, and maybe to just clarify a little bit, there are three parcels that Mr. Rodenberg owns around the one hundred and eighty-foot road to be vacated. Uh, Mr. Carey, whom is building the shed, is on the remaining, he's on the east side of that one hundred and eighty-foot length of road. So the road as it exists now is basically an entrance or a drive and access to those three parcels. And, uh, just in pondering the simple fact that the, uh, the human mortality rate is a hundred percent and that we're not all going to be here forever. We need to maintain access to those parcels, uh, for the future. So I recommended to both parties what would behoove everyone and those beyond us now is to create a perpetual ingress egress easement for Mr. Carey's half, which would go with the sale of that land in future and provide access to all three of those parcels in the future. And it would not land lock or cause more work for the county in the future. And they've agreed to have a survey, uh, purchased or hire a surveyor and have that easement written and have it recorded. And so it's just, it's kind of a formality that can happen after the fact of the vacation. But it will in fact behoove us from a county standpoint so that we won't have to create any future paperwork or put the bill for an easement in the future should parcels sell and be landlocked.
Well, if the parcel would sell to the present owner of the other three parcels, then he would probably want to kill that permanent easement potentially.
The easement, well, the easement would just be as, as an ingress egress easement. So it would be access only.
Right.
Right.
But I mean, if he ends up with all of it per se, or someone buys it all.
Right.
Then they're not really denied.
No.
For an island or none of that's created.
Right.
Okay, and that resolution handles that, I assume, right?
The resolution just handles the termination of the right of way for the county and the responsibility for maintenance.
Good.
Do you have to come back to us for the easement?
No, no, that will, the easement will be borne of the two parties involved and it will be recorded with the county.
Good.
Are we doing this then, Jody, in the right sequence? Should the, um, easement be recorded before we vacate? Why wouldn't we do it that way?
They have a handshake agreement as in.
Well, handshake agreements, they don't work.
Right, but, uh, I mean, we could, we could make a contingent upon that being filed. That's all.
So amend the resolution to, um, make a contingent on an easement being recorded between the existing two parties and.
Ingress egress for the thirty-three feet by one eighty feet on Mr. Carey's property.
It has not been surveyed or it has?
No, has not.
Okay, and that's on their, that's their responsibility?
Yes.
What is it, sixty-six foot probably?
Sixty-six feet.
Is that where this probably is?
Public right of way, yeah.
Today is the day for the public hearing.
Right.
The resolution is not time sensitive to the public hearing, right? So we could put this off or we could add that language in, make sure it's correct.
Right.
And move forward that way. I'm much more comfortable doing it that way.
Yeah, yeah, it's true. We can do it that way.
Okay, is it our responsibility to put that resolution together, Jody, or will you?
I'll, I'll put the verbiage in there that it's contingent upon.
Awesome, thank you so much for this. Okay, and the cost be borne by, the cost of the survey, the recording of the easement?
Will be borne by the two parties.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
So, so do we want to, uh, well, we need to close the public hearing, I guess. Motion, or is there anybody else who wants to speak on this matter? No one else wants to speak? Who wants to?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Discussion.
Okay. Chairman Bell, I don't think that we need any more discussion on this. We'll just put this off.
Well, I gotta have a rule call.
Oh, I am so sorry for barging in on that.
Rule call.
Chairman Bell.
Aye.
Supervisor Dorgensen.
Aye.
Supervisor Shane.
Aye.
Supervisor Miller.
Aye.
Supervisor Wickman.
Aye.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think we can just basically set this aside.
Yeah. Okay, awesome.
Julia, you'll be back on the agenda for next, next week?
Sure, thank you.
Perfect, yeah. In the end, are both parties here or just the one party here?
Dustin doesn't happen to be here, Mr. Carey, but.
Who's Dustin?
Dustin Carey.
Okay. Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, we're up to that. Moving on to Andy Wicks, engineer, secondary roads, discussion and or decision to approve order reservation number sixty-one twenty-five, authorizing county engineer to close secondary roads for construction and or maintenance.
I'll move.
Okay. That's routine.
Okay, yeah. Any other discussion? Hearing none, rule call.
Chairman Bell.
Aye.
Supervisor Wickman.
Aye.
Supervisor Shane.
Aye.
Supervisor Miller.
Aye.
Supervisor Dorgensen.
Aye.
Okay, resolution number sixty-two twenty-five, authorizing the county engineer to certify completion papers and final acceptance of contract work on the farm-to-market and federal aid systems.
I'll move.
Okay.
Discussion. Hearing none, rule call.
Chairman Bell.
Aye.
Supervisor Dorgensen.
Aye.
Supervisor Miller.
Aye.
Supervisor Shinny.
Aye.
Supervisor Wickman.
Aye.
These are the same things we do at the first of the year to allow the county engineer to do the duties that he's responsible for. Uh, resolution sixty-three twenty-two-five, authorizing county engineer to issue and sign special permits for the movement of vehicles of excess size and weight upon county, Potawatomi County secondary roads.
I'll move.
Second.
Excuse me one second, Chairman Bell, you said sixty-three, you mean sixty-two?
I'm sorry, it's sixty-three, so sixty-three.
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 Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize, okay. I'm sorry, who made the motion to move?
Uh, Tim made the motion and Susan, you seconded it?
Yes.
Discussion. Okay, rule call.
Chairman Bell.
Aye.
Supervisor Miller.
Aye.
Supervisor Shane.
Aye.
Supervisor Wickman.
Aye.
Supervisor Dorgensen.
Aye.
Resolution number sixty-four dash twenty-two-five and title resolution does need alternative representation for the RPA eighteen.
This is the MAPPA RPA eighteen that Jody and Adam have been representing us for the technical committee. And this just places Andy Wicks as the primary for the technical, keeping alternatives of Jody and Adam.
Do we get, we get two votes on this, right? Is that correct?
On the MAPPA, it's one for the technical and one for the policy committee.
You get a motion?
Okay, second.
Discussion. Hearing none, rule call.
Chairman Bell.
Aye.
Supervisor Shane.
Aye.
Supervisor Dorgensen.
Aye.
Supervisor Wickman.
Aye.
Supervisor Miller.
Aye.
Okay, moving right along. We got money from the tourism people here today. Mark Ackman, executive director, Council Plus Convention and Visitors Bureau, update for Potawatomi County Tourism.
Thanks, Jody, thanks, Adam.
Thanks, you.
Thanks, gentlemen. I'll try to swing out for just a second this afternoon.
Sounds good. Mr. Chair, uh, thank you so much for inviting us so tight to hop around the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. I love seeing you in this before me. And for the opportunity to reschedule since I wasn't able to be here two weeks ago. Along with myself, here's a familiar face, Craig Carlson. He's now been with us for a year, uh, providing his talents in terms of our marketing messaging and we appreciate it, uh, his talents at our disposal. Uh, you should have a pocket folder in front of each one of you with, on one side is a copy of the PowerPoint slides that I'm going to go through here very quickly as well as the twelve-page fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. Mitch, if you wouldn't mind, to the next slide. Uh, as the board knows, we are a five-oh-one C-six nonprofit, uh, have been since twenty-fourteen. The same classification, five-oh-one C-six that has a chamber of commerce, uh, which makes sense because we both promote commerce in our own way. We have our own lane that we occupy. Uh, like other nonprofits, we have a seven-member board of directors. Supervisor Shane is one of the members. He's been on the board for just over a year now. Appreciate his time. Uh, but since the inception of the CBB, we've had a county voice at the table going back to September of twenty-thirteen when, uh, we first started developing the organization. Uh, Sidney Thompson of Potawatomi Conservation has, uh, was serving on the board. And then we had, uh, Mark Shoemaker succeed her and then eventually Brian Shale. The six other members, I represent attractions, restaurants, hotels. We also have someone with a strong sports background as well as a liaison to the city, which provides a majority of our funding. On the other side of the slide, you're going to see a list of our team members. Besides Craig and myself, we have two others that make up our small but mighty team of four. And then if you go on to the next slide, uh, I always like to start by just kind of reintroducing, you know, what we do and what we do, but not so much for the board, but for the audience members here. If you boil down what we do to its essential elements, what it really constitutes is us attracting new customers for local businesses. Those new customers happen to be visitors that have traveled at least fifty miles or farther to come to a destination, that's the definition as per the U.S. Travel Association. And when they arrive as new customers, they almost automatically become new taxpayers because if they do stay overnight at a Council Plus hotel, they pay seven percent of the mobile tax. And if they do need retail shopping, they're going to pay the local option sales tax. And you add those two things together, it holds a benefit for all of those businesses. Next slide, please. What do those new customers represent in terms of value? Uh, in calendar year twenty-twenty-three, according to tourism economics, they spent more than three hundred and thirty-six billion dollars in Potawatomi County. That actually, they put it down on a county-by-county basis as well summarized on a state basis, which is seven point three billion dollars. That by itself in Potawatomi County is a third of a billion dollars just by itself. And then in terms of taxpayers, we had these new taxpayers that go behind three point one eight four million dollars in hotel motel taxes in fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, according to the city of Council of Love. That is the fourth in a row that we've had hotel motel taxes total more than three million dollars. And if you go to the next slide, you see the last eleven fiscal years. While this year was not a record-setting amount, as we saw in fiscal years twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, this still is remarkable considering inflationary wins that, uh, the entire economy faced as well as the fact that a lot of that built up, uh, interest in travel during the pandemic had largely, largely been spent, so to speak. Next slide. So as far as what the Council of Love CBB has done to help motivate that spending, uh, since the pandemic, the summer of twenty-twenty, we really leaned into digital marketing. Uh, we've done that on a seasonal basis, summer, fall and spring initially. And then when the county purchased Crescent Hill at Hitchcock, we added winter marketing uh, in the late December of twenty-twenty-two and January, February of twenty-twenty-three. We started aggressively marketing, uh, not just Potawatomi County and things in general, but because specifically you have Crescent Hill at Hitchcock here. It's a rare attraction, not every community or county in the state of Iowa has it. In fact, very few do. You'd have to go to Boone or Des Moines in Iowa to find a similar attraction or to the Sioux Falls area or to the St. Joe, Kansas City area to find something like that. It's really a singular attraction that we can use to build business when we need it most. Uh, that's when hotel occupancy is the lowest, average rate is the lowest. Iowa traffic is at its lowest. So there's an opportunity that we build around Crescent Hill to really try to pull visitors into the area. We have executed then, since that winter, a winter campaign for the last several years, a four-season campaign that served ads like the one in the lower left-hand corner. That one is promoting, uh, Crescent Hill. And we saw impressions made by those digital ads increase by twenty percent. And then the desired action of clicking on those ads go up by twenty-one percent. And the desired action, clicking on the ad, takes them to unleashcb.com where we have content specifically geared that time of year. We push to the next slide. Everything points on unleashcb.com, as I just mentioned. Uh, we saw our traffic go up. So a year ago, as we reported growth in traffic to the website, well, that just accelerated for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. Or we saw double-digit increases on over four of the five metrics that are listed there. You need visitor sessions, page views, events. And then the only one that didn't hit double digits was pages for visits. That still grew by seven percent. We even had our social media following go up by five percent. Uh, but we use very specific things that we try to market. We have six message pillars and none of them, you're going to see, we have something for everybody because that's really a false promise and really doesn't lean into the things that we truly do have in stage such as unmatched railroad history, less hills, the Missouri River, outdoor attractions as well as live music and then others. We really lean into the things that we have strength. You go to the next slide. Like I say, everything points to unleashcb.com and you're seeing a partial, uh, showing there of our homepage. At the top is a header video that always rotates. You come to the page, it's going to be in all likelihood different. Uh, but below that, you're going to see a couple of featured events and we intentionally kind of always this, this way. So it really shows that we lean into events. One thing I did mention in the previous slides is that over the course of the fiscal year, we have one thousand eight hundred and thirty-five events submitted to the website, uh, which was an all-time high. So if anyone is saying there's nothing to do in Potawatomi County, they don't know what they're talking about. There's plenty to see and do and we really focus on that on the website. If you were to scan that QR code, that would take you to the website and you can see on a smartphone how easy it is to navigate and how much we really feature, not just in Council of Love, but throughout the entire county. And the next slide, this really shows that we lean into promoting events through our weekly newsletter, the Unleashed CB Bulletin. And those are two different editions. At the very top, you're going to see a blog speaking to an upcoming activity or event or something that's appropriate for that season. And then below that, on the left-hand side, you're going to see five, six, maybe eight different featured events with a photo that really calls to action things going on in the county. And then on the right-hand side, you're going to see all the other events that are going on between that Thursday that that edition comes out, all the way to the following Thursday. So it's usually chock full with everything's going on. Someone submits an event to unleashcb.com. They're going to get it in this bulletin so that it has the dual value of being on the website uh, with all the traffic that we generate on in and then also in this weekly e-newsletter that comes out every Thursday at one o'clock, just like clockwork. If you were to scan the QR code, you can sign up for the e-newsletter. And if you do, you're only going to get one email per week. You don't fill the list, you don't find one or listen. Subscribers with all sorts of messages, you just get one per week. Going on to the next slide. Uh, we had some other wins during the course of the year. I've been talking the last couple of years about the fact that the Iowa Association of Business and Industry was coming with its Taking Care of Business Conference. Uh, they came here for the first time in its one hundred and twenty-two-year history on June tenth, eleventh and twelfth. Uh, they saw more than just the inside of the Mid-America Center. They got to take a local history tour, a calling card tour and the tours of local industry. And then also over the course of the year, we supported ten different tournaments. Not that we just had ten in the area, but those are the ones that needed support. That those generated were the eighty-four-hundred hotel reunites with a value of ten hundred thousand dollars. One of them was the U.S. Open Badminton Championships, the second time in its many years. Uh, it took place at the Mid-America Center on the, immediately after the CWS, the last week of June. And this drew competitors not only from across the country, but also around the world like other U.S. Opens, like the U.S. Open Gold and Tennis Championships. Uh, so we had some pretty high-level competitors in that world. I won't say that's the equivalent of the NFL, but it's a pretty big deal. Next slide. And as I was telling you a year ago, uh, we've been making the slow transition to a new name. Uh, our counterparts that are generally known by an action verb in the destination name, such as visit Omaha, catch Des Moines, discover Ames. Uh, we decided to catch up with the times and serve you free to ourselves for doing business as Unleash Council of Love. Our social media handles are already that, uh, but we needed to take some time to reimagine our brand. But we didn't want to skew very far from the image campaign, the city image campaign that was launched about ten years ago. We engaged M Space and Lebrun, uh, to be able to look at what our new branch should look like. And then going through that process, it uses many of the same colors, fonts, uh, but also put a new twist on those so that we're going to stay current for a good long time with our new name. So in the coming weeks and months, you're going to start seeing this much more often. Uh, going to the next slide, I'm going to transition to Craig, who's going to talk a bit about a video that was captured in the middle of this summer, really speaking to one of our major calling cards.
Yeah, uh, Mark had mentioned that the exceptional live music is one of our message pillars. So on our website, we have a running blog year-round that features any event that was submitted to our website and features live music. So, um, it's something that we lean on all year round, but, um, summertime presents a unique opportunity for, for our community. Um, Stur Concert Cove being a premier opportunity to draw visitors. Um, we, we leaned heavily into that this past summer in our paid marketing efforts and, uh, that resulted in twenty percent increase in, in ticket sales for, for Stur Concert Cove. So I think we were effective with, with helping spread that word. Um, you know, it's not just the live music, it's the evening entertainment that presents an opportunity to, to try to convince visitors to stay just a few more hours, make it an overnight stay and obviously the hope is that they spend some more money within our community while they're here. Um, also over the summer, there was a big, um, concert held down at, uh, Tom Hannon from Rivers Edge Park. Eighty-nine-seven The River, uh, put on their thirtieth anniversary show down there, which I think was a, was a fantastic opportunity for our community. Um, once we found out that that was going to take place, uh, Mark and I met with, um, Sophia John at Eighty-nine-seven The River when they said, hey, how can we, how can we be of some assistance in helping promote this opportunity for our community? Um, Tom Hannon Rivers Edge Park is, is, is a, is a featured piece of our community that we celebrate regularly, not only the proximity to the river. Um, we, we also promote our proximity to Omaha. And, um, with the setup of that, that concert, um, concert goers were parking over on the Omaha side of that, of the river, walking a premier, um, piece of our, um, community, being the Bob Carey Pedestrian Bridge. What a, what a fantastic way to promote our proximity, um, our public parks, um, the public art that's down there and then obviously the live music. Um, so we helped promote that ahead of time and knowing that, uh, there was also a show taking place at Stur Concert Cove at the same time. Um, there were roughly twelve thousand people enjoying live music in our community at the same time. So, uh, we decided to enlist some help to grab some footage that we could use and leverage moving forward. Um, once we did that, um, Mark said, hey, we should show a couple of clips. And I said, well, we, we can't just roll out just a couple of clips. Let me, let me cut something together. So we put a little bit of highlight reel together of that, of that day's events. Um, and this isn't exactly how we'll leverage it moving forward, but I think it gives a, a pretty good idea of, of, uh, what we're capable of doing and what we're capable of celebrating in, in, in our community, so.
Are you going to show that?
I'm going to try my best to make the video.
Okay, exactly.
I've seen it, Craig. I think it's, I like it.
Good. Good. Thank you.
Is that your drone?
We, no, we hired out some, you know, most of my drone experience is more landscape. And so we hired some some people that were, they call it first-person view, where it's kind of wide angle, fast swoops, those kinds of things. And then we, it was, there were three different people gathering footage all at the same time. And it was a 13-hour day down there. But I think, like I said, hours of footage that we can leverage for years to come to promote the live music opportunities, the Bob Carey Pedestrian Bridge, the art, the river. One of the crazy things is I didn't realize until, because I was down on the, you know, inside the concert, I didn't realize until looking through the footage that there were lines of boats just anchored down on the other side of the levee. So it was kind of neat to go through there and realize that there were like 11 boats parked there just jamming out. So pretty, pretty neat opportunity, I think.
That's impressive.
I will say that we had intended to shoot a little bit more footage of Stur Concert Cove. Unfortunately, their hired talent did not approve of drones inside the airspace. So I just told them, we'll pivot and we'll shoot from public spaces and get what we can. We're hoping that we can speak with with their management team down there and see if we can line up a time to to shoot some stuff down there, get an act that approves of it, to get some similar content down there, too. So.
And Thomas Roberts has expressed a willingness to consider opportunities. It was just old Swindell who wouldn't approve the capture footage. Craig, do you want to tell them how close the drones sometimes would get to the performers?
Sure. Some of those first-person view drones, you can't really tell via the video. But I mean, we're within four feet of the singer's face. So there were a few times where I, I'll admit, I kind of panicked and ran over to the drone operators and said, hey, let's back out just a just a touch, you know? Let's get on the fringe of too close, but let's, you know, let's not get kicked out of here. So it was pretty awesome. And that's just a small snippet of hours of footage that we have. And like I said, you know, having access to that that kind of content is is rare. And so we'll be able to leverage what was collected during that day for for several years. So pretty excited.
Eighty-nine-seven was one day show?
It was. It was. It was a, it was a festival, if you want to call it that. But they had several headliner bands, Three-Eleven, Sublime, Blue October, some names that were really heavy in the 90s, really popular bands.
My wife used to work at Eighty-nine-seven.
Okay.
She sold advertising these kinds of programs. But has there ever been, are you guys aware of the Bluegrass Festival in Boca years ago? Nope, no, no.
That might predate me. Yeah, I don't.
Oh, my God. It was a week-long festing of bluegrass bands around the region. And they used to get so crowded, you couldn't ride through Boca. I mean, there'd be thousands, thousands, thousands of people. And they would be there, they'd camp out. Of course, they'd be there all week long. I would certainly like to find a way to revive that. But you guys have never heard it, so nobody's ever, okay. I'll have to get video.
I will say that, you know, inside the annual report printout that that you received, it does kind of touch on this, but I think it's worth mentioning that the three top blogs on our website this past year featured live music. You know, I mentioned that the promotion of the Stur Concert Cove over this summer resulted in a 20% increase in sales. The Eighty-nine-seven concert sold out. So spreading the word does significantly impact, you know, the promotion of the of our community.
That's almost the total.
Eight, 8,850, something like that. Yeah.
Just going to get the Mac.
What's that?
Get the Mac.
Getting the the Mac, they have X. I did talk to Thomas Roberts a few weeks ago. We were going into an event that morning. And he was saying that they were pursuing some opportunities, but it's all up to scheduling and budgeting at that point.
Trans-Siberian Orchestra is coming.
We're going to.
Almost every year.
So is the MAC Center basically underutilized in your guys' opinion?
Well, I put another hat on that I wear, and that hat is big chair of the Armenian Commission. So quarterly, the MAC staff, eras or seizures, however you heard of them, report out. Well, there's a mix of public and private events, you know, things that are conferences, you know, and other activities that are not necessarily widely known by the public. It's underappreciated how busy it is. And there was, not this past year, but the year before, they came awfully close to breaking even. And it's been the case a couple of times. And when you have the pandemic, of course, that's not possible. But I think, and I've talked to the staff about this, they need to talk more publicly about what's going on there because it's just deemed to be dark, and it's not.
What's on the horizon for 2026?
Well, one of the things that we're going to be focusing on is, well, actually, several different things. But there is going to be the opening of the Mid-American Energy Adventure Tower on the west side of Levy Addams, this north of the pedestrian bridge. So celebrating that opening and leveraging that, we have been working this year for the very first time with Sojourne, which is a Omaha-based digital marketing firm. They just recently been purchased, so I guess they're now Omaha-based any longer. But that's addressing something that we've long discussed, which is what's the connection between our advertising and hotel bookings? We haven't been able to draw a direct line. Sojourne allows us to do that with the partnerships that they have across the private sector in terms of monitoring that. So we've gotten some initial results. We have some tweaking to do because we want to see our web traffic be maintained at the same time that we're able to do these conversions and see how that's connecting. And also just making sure that we're truly getting the right information. But that's a that's a focal point. And Craig, just getting activated over here, I know that's sounding a lot of times, but he was, Ricky had a fire hose. There was a lot going on there. I didn't know how well Emma was, Emma Schwalter was juggling things until she left. But I think our creative, which is shown there on the cover of the fiscal year 2025, a sampling of our creative, really shows how we've moved a whole step above what we've done before in terms of advertising.
Craig, can I ask you one more question? I had to watch this a couple of times. How close was that beach ball to the drone?
Pretty close, pretty close. And there were several clips that were like that. Like I said, within a couple, couple of feet. The the drone pilots that were hired for that job, though, they compete in drone racing. So, I mean, they'll wear goggles and fly through obstacle courses. And so talking with them, it was a, two of the three that were were there were two of of the top drone pilots in the state of Nebraska. And so, yeah, that's beyond my skill set. I could cut it, but I couldn't fly it.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks for having us.
Next time we meet, I'll meet with you, bring some videos.
Okay, we'll do.
Don't let him sing to you.
That'll be a real threat.
Yeah. Haley Gibson. Stakeholder relations, manager, turnkey logistics update on some carbon solutions project.
Thank you for having me today. It's been a while.
Yeah.
Especially since I've been here, so. Then I have one extra.
Mary Ann, did you get one?
Thank you. Okay. So my name is Haley Gibson. I've been here once or twice in the past. I think at that time I was Landrell, so same person gets the same. My goal today is just to give you guys an update on the project. It's been a while. We haven't had a whole lot to talk about until recently. You guys probably got some emails from us, or you should have gotten some emails from us talking about our new CEO, new management team, and then also the community and landowner partnership program, which is one of the main things I'm going to go through today. But just starting with our new management, like I said, we do have a new CEO. His name is Joe Griffin. He brings about 40 years of experience in the pipeline industry to this project, and he brought the team with him. And kind of coming from him and his team is that community and landowner partnership program, as well as I have a handout in here that shows some open houses that we're going to be holding in November. So I think the closest one to you guys is going to be that one on November 10th in Red Oak from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And really, what that is, is just an opportunity for landowners, community members, board of supervisors, anyone who has any questions to come in, ask their questions, as well as meet our new management team.
So that was 10 to 11?
11:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
Oh, okay.
On November 10th.
I'm sorry.
On November 10th in Red Oak at the McAlpine. And this is also on our website. So all these are out there if you want to find them. So the next thing I would like to talk about is the community and landowner partnership program. So some of this stuff is new, some of it is not. But I'll start with that first commitment there, emergency response and preparedness. A while ago, we did announce that we are going to do a $50,000 per county grant plus $1,000 per mile in the county. So if you take a look at your map, at the bottom, looks like we have about 25 miles per towist in this county. So that's an extra $25,000. And just to note that grant is going to be in addition to us purchasing all emergency response equipment that we acquired. So that's pretty much industry synergy for pipeline companies, obviously, to provide that equipment and also give out a grant. And that grant will continue in some way, shape, or form as we go through the projects in time.
Will that be every year?
Yes, we'll do something every year. It may not be that exact amount. It might be something that has to be applied for, but we will continue with grants.
Can I ask what kind of special equipment you got to have?
So at the bare minimum, CO2 monitors. CO2 monitors will be provided for all of the fire departments and police officers to have in their vehicle as well. And this is all written in our Phase 1 permit. So the state, we committed to that, and then the state also said, we know you committed to it, but we're going to hold you to it and put it in your apartment. You have to buy all this thorough equipment, and that includes that bare minimum, those CO2 monitors. But really, when you get down to the other thing, it depends on what those individual fire departments and county emergency managers have. Obviously, you guys are going to be a little bit different than Shelby County. You know, every county has different needs. And so our job is to fill those needs. And then on top of that comes that emergency management grant, which can be used on anything. We're not saying you have to use it on CO2 response.
Can you explain to me the dangers of a CO2 leak? For instance, I understand CO2 is a heavier gas, so it tends to stay stay to the ground, that kind of thing.
Yeah, sure. So it is heavier than air. Specifically, when we're talking about pipeline rupture. And there's only so much detail I can go into. I'm not an emergency response, but I can tell you what I know. If there was a rupture, depending on how it happens, let's just say, you know, someone's digging the backhoe, they hit the pipeline. It's not going to, because it is a high-carbon steel pipeline, it's probably not going to bust on the first hit. But if they think it's a rock, they keep hitting, it busts. The immediate danger to that person is going to be the debris flying up because it is pressurized. The second thing is going to be the cold. Because once it comes to atmosphere, the CO2 comes to atmosphere under that pressure, it creates almost like a dry eye. So you'll see like kind of a white cloud. And then the third thing, which people mostly focus on, which is, I would say, you know, I don't know what we're looking for here. But the third thing would be that it's in spexing it, and that's what most people focus on. So it does displace oxygen. When you're in an outdoor environment, which obviously this pipeline is going to be in an outdoor environment, it's outside, the CO2 can disperse very quickly. So there is, and in our dispersion analysis presentations, we do actually show the video. There's one Oshere Reportable of a pipeline incident where a contractor walked away with injury, and it was frostbite on his finger. So he's working on actually two CO2 pipelines and that run across each other. He pulls them, and one of them is facing directly into the cab of the of the backhoe. And he immediately jumps out, obviously, to get away, and he ends up with frostbite. So I would say, and because that was an open ditch, he didn't have to worry so much about debris because he was working on that pipeline. But hopefully that answers your question to Senator Green.
Yeah, I, well, we've talked about pipelines, and we've got a lot of natural gas pipelines going around. Just as, as a situation, safety situation, just as much of an issue, too. But you would have, in pipelines, they would have a pressure sensor. So if they lose pressure, the thing shuts down right away. Is that what?
Correct. So we would have what's called a SCADA system, which is going to be similar to what's on those natural gas pipelines. And then we, as well as that, we would have an emergency response plan, and we have that for every single mile of the pipe. So what we have done differently than most pipelines is, what FEMSA, the Pipeline Hazardous Material Safety Administration at federal level, requires pipeline companies to do dispersion analysis on what they consider high consequence areas, so high population areas. We have done it across the entire route, whether it's considered high consequence or not by FEMSA. And that helps us create our emergency response plan. But yes, there will be a SCADA system that alerts us immediately and shuts the valve on either side of that rupture. And just on your map here, you can see those red ribbons are valves. And this is an eight-inch line.
How fast does the product move through that line?
You know, I don't know how fast. That's a good question. I can get you an answer on that. I can tell you.
To our board.
Yeah, I think I can tell you, you know, at at every ethanol plant, that serves at the pump station. So pressure and the movement would probably quicker at that. And then it would go down until it hits another pump station up again. And that's speaking of, I'm talking about pressure there, which helps move the product. So I don't know if the speed necessarily changes. There is no pump station near you guys. So I'll leave this zoom slower, but I'm getting in over my depth there. So I'll get you an answer to any of that, too. I'll assume slower, but I'm getting in over my depth there, so I'll get you an answer anyway.
Appreciate that. Why was the Mississippi incident so deadly?
Yep, that is, that has been a big topic since we started. So one thing I would like to point out is that the difference between the pipeline in Mississippi and what our pipeline will be. So completely different um purpose down there in Mississippi, that uh pipeline was used, the CO2 was used for enhanced oil recovery. So it didn't matter how pure the CO2 was. It was just being injected to pump more oil. Our purpose is to sequester, and we're getting our CO2 from ethanol plants, which is ninety-nine percent pure CO2 running through our pipeline. So, like I said, theirs was not ninety-nine percent. It had other things in it, hydrogen sulfide, um, probably other chemicals as well. Um, and ours will be CO2, so that would be sole product and danger, I guess, in our pipeline, whereas with that pipeline, there were things such as hydrogen sulfide, which is deadly and a much, much lower part per million. So we're talking ten parts per million danger to death, like you could die with exposure to hydrogen sulfide, whereas the CO2, we're looking at forty thousand parts per million. And I also want to note, because people will say, well, they didn't, they didn't find any hydrogen sulfide when they tested in Sotarsia, Mississippi. And that is because there was a complete failure on the pipeline's part with their dispersion analysis. They did not catch that Sotarsia, Mississippi would be a could affect area with their pipeline, so there was no equipment to monitor. The emergency responders didn't even know that there was a CO2 pipeline there because it had previously transported a different product and they converted it, and the county was never made aware. Obviously, that's very different with our, with the situation here. Um. You know, we we tried to keep everyone well aware. We have a great relationship with Doug, um, and the emergency manager. Um, plan to continue to keep that relationship, make sure everybody's aware of the dangers of this pipeline. Um, and that we're prepared to handle those. Is it?
Is your pipeline, what is the product it's made out of?
High carbon steel.
Um, American made?
Yeah, American manufactured, yeah, yeah.
Uh. You're collecting CO2. Where where is that going? I understand South Dakota doesn't allow CO2 capture at this point. Is that correct?
Great question. So South Dakota, where we were originally, and we're still looking at going with the CO2, is North Dakota. Um, to get there, we have to go through South Dakota. South Dakota did pass a law um that says no eminent domain for CO2 pipelines. That makes our job pretty hard, because even if you can get, you know, a hundred percent voluntary acquisition, there could be, you know, here if somebody could buy one parcel of land. So that, it makes it very hard. We are still looking for options to go um to North Dakota. We're also in our amendment that we submitted to the IUC. We've requested an upsizing type through Woodbury County where we enter into Nebraska. Um. In order to give us the opportunity to go west into Wyoming to sequester that CO2, so either North Dakota or Wyoming is.
Have you given up on eminent domain?
Have we given, we we have, I guess I'll answer it this way. We have not given up on negotiating with landowners.
Okay.
So we, this project right now, I mean, you guys, how long have we been here? It's been years, right? Um, we're going to continue until the day we can, we can no longer wait to construct, to work with landowners. And some of that is, you know, what I'm going to talk about in these commitments. Um, hopefully makes it more appealing for people to sign. Um, but also we know that, you know, adding these commitments that are mostly dollar amounts to incentivize people to sign is not just going to convince them right away. Um, we understand with how long we've been here and the resistance that there's been, that it's going to take a lot of conversation. I think that's one of the really good things about some of the new team we have, is they they understand that coming in, so.
Uh, I'm one hundred percent against some of that domain.
I understand, and it's a pain for everyone. It's a pain for you guys. It's a pain for us. I promise you, it is. Um, and obviously it's a pain for the landowner, so that's something we try to avoid. And what we've found is when people actually sit down and talk to us, um, we have success in coming to an agreement because we can truly negotiate on everything. Um, and that's helped. Where we have issues is where people just say, no way, don't talk to me, don't call me, you know, and completely shut us out.
I agree with Brian. I uh, I think eminent domain is popular use, especially for private sector.
So, I mean, the IUC is the one who decides whether we can use eminent domain or not. Because we permit through the IUC, they give us a permit, you do have the right to use eminent domain. You know, you could say we're a private company, but so are, you know, the old guests. These are private, um, you know, most of your electric, these are are private as well. But we do believe that we serve a public good in helping the ethanol plants. I mean, in Iowa, um, you know, I think fifty, sixty percent of corn was sold to ethanol plants uh in the year twenty twenty-four. Um, and if ethanol plants suffer, the corn farmers suffers, which is, you know, as an Arkansas girl, seeing all the corn here, I mean, it's it's a big, big industry. I'm sure you guys know that, but.
Okay, my last question, uh, is there any way that this CO2 pipeline system that is being threatened with subsidizing, subsidy, government subsidy?
Yeah, so just like with a lot of um you know, projects, even the ethanol industry, the federal government does give incentives to jumpstart projects like this. So right now, there is no federal or no taxpayer dollar, nothing like that. All private funding to get the project going. Once we are in operations, there is what's considered, what's called the forty-five Q tax credit, which we would benefit from, as well as the uh, I believe ethanol plants as well. We could split that. Um. And that's for a limited amount of time.
So Haley, for the easements in Potawatomi County, have you acquired all of them that you need?
Not all of them. I believe the last time that we um before we submitted our amendments and added phase two and kind of slowed down on acquisition, which we did slow down for a while. Our land agents are back out working now as of like two or three weeks ago. They're hitting the ground hard. Um, we were at, I think, eighty plus percent in this county. Um, could be even ninety. I need to double check that, and I'll get that to you guys. Um. So there's, we have a lot of time to get that extra twen- uh, ten, twenty percent. Um, and that's what we plan to do is is to go, and plus the IUC wrote in our permit that we have to go back to all those landowners and give them our last best offer. So there's no, you know, I know companies will, you know, at a random point in time, you might get your highest offer, and then you'll get a lowest offer if you're or a lower offer, and you can't get back up there, you know, if you're a landowner. Um, that's our opportunity for us. We we have to go back to that last highest number.
So you're, the easements are signed with an eight inch line. If that pipe is increased in size, do you have to go back to the landowners or?
So to a certain point, so I'll I'll tell you what's written in the easement, I believe, is two, it says pipe size up to, and it would be two sizes higher than what we have, than what the actual size would be. So it would probably say twelve in this county, twelve inches. If we were to go higher than twelve inches, yes, we have to go back to the IUC. In Woodbury County, where we requested the IUC to approve a pipe pipe size change, we do have to go back and renegotiate all those easements because we didn't have twenty-four inches that we needed. I think it went up to twenty. I mean, twenty.
And and how large is that pipe request for Woodbury County?
Twenty-four inches.
Is that because there are several that funnel into that?
Yeah, that's because it would become our main line um going west, so that would be the biggest, I believe the biggest, um, definitely in Iowa.
So, um, tall grasses, sorry, got theirs in. And um is there anything other that can go through that pipe system?
I don't know about tall grass.
No, I mean your pipe system.
Ours, it is written in the easement that is for CO2 only.
Only?
And not only that, it also says one pipe. So you know, a lot of companies will not specify, and they can put as many pipes there as they want. One pipe, CO2 only, and it does specify that size, which I believe was because that is higher than what we plan to do.
Generally, how's, how big is the easement?
Um. Think it's fifty permanent, fifty foot permanent, a hundred foot per construction.
Good. So fifty foot easement?
Yes, sir.
Is on top of the opportunity. So what if the pipe, when the pipe goes dark, if it does, which there are, there are dark pipes out there, but there is no rules back there, but I don't think when they put those in. So what what happens then?
Um, well, that's another area where landowners can negotiate. Um, if a landowner wants us to take it out of the ground, we will. Um, that has to be put in easement. Otherwise, it would be standard decommissioning procedure, which I, and I'm just a PR lady, I'm I'm not exactly sure how they do that.
How much, how much would you have of your pipe in our right of way, or do you not have?
In your county, you like roadway right away?
Yes.
Um, so we have, so I met with John. I've met with John a couple times. All you guys got a new engineer, so I'll be introducing myself to him. Um, but we we cross quite a few roads. So we, that right of way that we're in is at a ninety degree angle. We cannot lay parallel in the right of way per Iowa state code.
Correct.
So um, you can kind of see most of the roads we cross through on here, but obviously I have one detailed maps and I think.
You're crossing some state highways too, then?
Yes.
Good. They're not getting more money than we are, are they?
I have no idea. Hey, but we're we're here, whatever you guys need to do, if you want to, you know, there's been plenty of counties that.
Blank check, well, take a blank check.
Okay.
Below is a sign.
And and you're still pouring under all of the waterways?
Um, so it depends on the size of the waterway. Most of them, yes. Um. But yeah, I would say it depends on the size of it. And then obviously, if it's on, you know, private land or property, that's, we we would ask them their preference. Which is more likely for.
Other questions for Haley?
When will you know about eminent domain, these people?
So, our timeline is completely dependent on the IUC, on when we can start construction. So, and as you guys know, there's no time limit um for them to make a decision or anything like that, so our plan is to work with people um until they say they give us the green light to construct. Um, even when they give us the green light to construct, are we going to have all the materials ready, you know, those things? So, we're going to do it up until the last second, but I can't give you a timeline because IUC will, you know, we don't have a timeline from them, so.
Just to get into that.
I know. I understand. Um, I think that's been the biggest sticking point uh for most people, and.
Our farmers are very proud, and they love their land.
Oh, yes. Yes, they do, uh, rightfully so. And so that's why, you know, I think we have learned a lot since the beginning um of this project, and you know, I wouldn't say that we were ever unwilling to negotiate. I think we've always been willing to negotiate. Um, are we willing to negotiate on even more things now? Yeah, absolutely. So I think it's just, if there's any landowners listening, um, communication is key uh because we want to avoid eminent domain at all costs.
Do you pay them in a one-time check or over time?
So that is a great question, because that's part of one of our new commitments. So we, it used to be a lump sum payment, just all in one. Um, now we have multiple different easement options. So, landowners can choose from our, the new lump sum, which is actually three different payments, which would be one payment immediately, one when we get our IUC permit, because we'll have to get a new one because of those amendments, and then one once we start construction. Another option is to split those payments up over, you know, ten plus years, however many years they want. Um, and that, you know, that's something that landowners were asking for, you know, way back when, so it'll be out of that. Um, as well as an easement payment that is tied to our owner's financial distribution, so similar to being an investor or an owner, but there's no like liability tied to it, so if a company went down, they they don't have any liability there. Um, but anytime our investors or owners got a payment because the company's doing well, the landowner would also get to share in that. Um, and that was also requested from landowners in the past, so that flat out was added.
Is that in perpetuity?
Yeah, for the project lifetime. So as long as CO2 is running through, I um, they will get those distributions.
And one more question. If the land transfers, does, does it go to the next?
The the easement follows the land, stays with the land. I agree. I know a lot of things can be done in real estate where they, you know.
Right.
So but unless they work that out somehow, and they sold the property through real estate, I, you know, but standard it follows.
Can they plant above this?
Oh, yes, yes. You can plant above it, farm over it, all all of these. Um, another, you know, talking about the easement payments, another new thing that we're adding for landowners and counties are annual payments like grants. Um, so for landowners, we will have a baseline payment of twenty cents, twenty-five cents per foot per year payment to landowners. If we can get up to a hundred percent voluntary acquisition in the state, we will go up to fifty cents per foot per year to each landowner. There are some other markers, eighty percent, ninety percent, that take that um, that range up. Um, as far as the county goes, we are going to be paying twelve and a half cents per foot per year baseline to the county. If we can get up to a hundred percent voluntary acquisition, we will pay twenty-five cents per foot per year to the county, and there are, there are, for the county, and I will say that acquisition is based on county acquisition. So for landowners, it's based on state. For the county payments, it's based on county acquisition. Like I said, I believe you guys are eighty, ninety percent, so you're the, there's another marker at eighty percent, another marker at ninety percent that that twelve and a half cents would go up. And that's, you guys should have gotten an email with the full um, community and landowner partnership program, and those markers are listed in that. Um. And then just to move through this really quick, our construction commitment hasn't really changed. Um, we want to prioritize um union and local labor where we can. Obviously, it's a big project. We're probably going to have to pull some people from our state. Um, but we are going to prioritize local and union uh labor. Um, our contractors will be pre-qualified, and we will comply with our agricultural and environmental environmental mitigation plans. You guys probably know about the agricultural impact mitigation plan that the state um will be kind of work with the state on it. They ultimately approve it. Um, and that's where you guys would hire your county ag inspector. And um, what that company would do is they would have field agents that follow us through out production. Um, if we are not following that document, which is lengthy, um, to a T, they can stop us from working. Too wet outside, we're just not following, if our contractors aren't following the rules, they stop work, we can't move forward until we until either it's dry enough or we're following rules again, you know. Um. That ag inspector is hired by you, they work for you, we put the bill for that. The way it works, though, is they would send you an invoice that would be forwarded on to us just to avoid any conflict of interest. Um, type of thing, yeah. Um. And then doesn't really, I don't think it really applies to you guys, but we have done tribal engagement, and then water has been a big thing. Um, a big topic of concern um for the past four years, so the only time water is used on this project, just to be clear, is at the. the only time water is used on this project, just to be clear, is at the, um, ethanol plant where we will have the capture facility. And it's used to cool the process of pressurizing the CO2 and putting it into the pipeline. Um, so there's a lot of opportunity to recycle water. Those are things that we're looking into, um, also looking into other ways to cool that process aside from using water. So this, I mean, we've always looked into the recycling aspect, um, but just to put it out there, since it's been a big concern, that's something we have heard. Um, we're listening and, uh, we are looking at alternative ways. Um, I think that pretty much covers it. Other than I did add, you guys have probably seen this economic impact page before. This is county specific, we update it quarterly, these are estimates, it's based on the size and mileage of pipe in the county. Um, and we do have it broken down now where you can see, um, estimates of what township, or what each township, what city would get, um, schools, and then also the county general budget, is at the bottom there.
This, this predates me, I understand the board has passed a resolution opposing an use of eminent domain, is that right?
That's correct.
Sometime a few years ago.
It really goes to the Iowa Utilities Board.
Haley, do you have kids?
I do not.
Okay, if you did, would you have a concern about a school being within a mile and a half of a pipeline like this?
Not this pipeline, absolutely not. Um, that is, but you know, you're asking me, uh, someone who works for the pipeline company, but I will tell you, I would much rather have this, definitely a mile away, uh, but I'd rather have this than, you know, a national pass or something like that. Because like I said, if there is a rupture, it's going to disperse very quickly. Um, especially, you know, depending on wind speed and things like that. Um, being a mile and a half away from the school, um, it's not something that would concern me personally.
Thank you.
About railroad tracks?
We have very strict regulations when it comes to railroad tracks, yeah. Uh, so we have to work with, uh, each railroad company, um, and you know, I would say it's a minimum of twelve foot depth. We have to pour under those railroad tracks, just any line, what company, stuff like that, so.
They didn't tell you what's in those containers though, did they?
Do what?
They didn't tell you what's in those railroad containers, did they?
Yeah, probably.
A lot worse than what you're doing.
Yeah, probably. Dangerous stuff.
It's played out a couple of times in last year.
Oh, yeah, I know, I am. That's, you know, with pipelines, that it is proven the state has more transportation. You know, we could, I would say we couldn't, we really couldn't because of the volume of CO2, but if we had this in trucks, you know, I've gotten next to a CO, a truck filled with CO2, um, a semi truck, and it doesn't make me nervous, but I can imagine some people being a little nervous. Whereas, you know, having it in pipeline, it's much, much safer, um, than truckload rail, so.
Any other questions? Good, thank you.
Thanks for your.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Yep. Okay, Mickey Linehan, Finance and Tax Officer, Auditor's Office, discussion and or decision on amendment for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget and the set to public hearing on said amendment.
Good morning, everyone. I did email a couple of sheets that shows what we are amending for in the departments. I would like to set the public hearing for eleven, twelve of twenty-five, that is a Wednesday. I think you'll be canvassing that day, so either at ten AM or, or one PM, whenever you do, um, whenever you're in for that.
Make motion to approve.
When are we having our meeting that week, since Veterans Day is on our Tuesday meeting time?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
November twelfth at ten AM. Is that right?
No, when, what?
We haven't talked about it, I just was wanting to.
What time do you want to do your?
It can't be before one o'clock.
It cannot be before one.
Right.
Okay, so we'll probably just do ten.
Okay, so ten o'clock for a regular meeting, one o'clock to canvas the election.
Yeah. Got a motion by Shay.
Second.
Well, discussion.
You'll take a look at the agenda, Scott. Maybe we can get it, no, and then canvas at one.
Well, yeah.
Instead of meeting at ten, say you're till eleven. Go hide out somewhere for two hours, then come back and canvas the election.
Well, she can't do it till afternoon at one or after?
One, one o'clock, because there was the new cutoff for any late things that would come in.
Yeah, I mean, if we don't, I mean, we can say eleven, but she's gotta publish this, so.
Yes, if you could please let me know.
Yeah.
This afternoon.
What else, else she's have on the agenda? Eleven, twelve?
I would say just keep it at ten o'clock, so the public is aware and they just know we pushed it back a day.
Picking up your trash.
What?
So it's like picking up your trash, they push it back a day.
Oh, okay.
In a holiday.
Yeah, I didn't follow that.
Well, that's how it works, if it's a holiday, everything day behind.
Yes, but it's at the same time, a day behind, so.
Well, I don't know about the same time, but yeah, where is that, that's what the board wants. That's what the board wants, then that's what we'll do. So is that the motion?
You want to keep the hearing at ten, then?
That's what the motion is.
That's what my second is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm.
Is this not a roll call?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Okay, to reap, to reappropriate funds from the Human Resource Department fifty to Board of Supervisor Department one and to sign resolution number sixty-six dash twenty-twenty-five regarding said reaport.
Department. Second.
Discussion.
You want to address this man, Mitch, or Becky?
If you'll remember, when the HR director left, she moved the public relations person under Mitch, so he is under the board, we, instead of doing an amendment by law, we can just reappropriate that budget into the board's budget.
Thank you.
Karen Bell?
Right.
Supervisor Shay?
Aye.
Supervisor Miller?
Aye.
Supervisor Jorgensen?
Aye.
Please, I'll be waiting.
Sure.
Yeah, discussion indoor decision to approve letter of.
Thank you.
Letter of support for the Advanced Southwest Iowa Economic Development Foundation for grant application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for a two-year operating grant to help launch us and sustain our new co-working and entrepreneurial hub in Council Plus.
I say we do a motion.
I'll second.
This is just a letter, right, no funding?
Correct.
Right, it's just a letter of recommendation. Advanced Southwest Iowa now has a foundation that's a five oh one C three, so they can apply for grants on their own behalf. And this is just a letter of support for a grant application.
Yeah, and, and it's, um, they'll have that ability to do that going forward. It's just, you know, need to be able to operate more than two years, if you're gonna be in that business, so hopefully they can balance out their books somehow to figure that part out, because if they don't get this grant, I don't know what they're gonna do. So. The other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, hearing then, motion passes. Tracy Nose Caveball, Environmental Health Coordinator, planning and development discussion and or decision to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the twenty-twenty-five Weed Commissioners Report. Don't move.
Second.
Tracy?
All right, yeah, uh, this year we didn't see a big change really over the previous years. Uh, we had a lot more in the residential areas this year. Um, of course, the thistles are still our big thing for our farmers and in the fields and stuff. We did see a little increase for, uh, wild sunflowers. But we had, uh, ten, uh, written complaints that we sent out, and then two of them I was able to handle just with a phone call. But, uh, we had one property that is a repeat property, we do it every year as property maintenance more. But it wasn't, sorry, what was that?
That's one out by one.
Uh, no, this, actually, we haven't had any problem with them, out off, uh, four hundred and fortieth.
Yeah.
Yeah, they've been, uh, actually, that property was sold and haven't heard anything else on that for the last, uh, two years now. The majority of them were just, uh, like I said, residential areas, abandoned houses, and people not taking care of the yard.
They were friends and partners at the DOT. They got the missile farms.
We've had a few complaints about that. Nice thing is, uh, Rob's department is always good. Anytime we get a complaint on right of way or anything, they're usually out there within a couple of days to get taken care of.
At the DOT, but our people.
Yeah, our people.
Do we deal with DOT then?
Um, for that, I, for me, I don't deal with that at all. I don't know if, uh, they do at all. But for our area, everything we do is just a right of way.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? Hearing, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign, hearing then, motion passes.
Thank you, Tracy.
And then you make us go to side yard business.
That's like the guy, I told the guy that sells the mole worms, I says, where's your mole farm at? He just keeps on bringing over moles and then he wants to sell those worms, to have the moles eat. Great the business.
Nonsecurity.
Thanks, Tracy.
Thank you.
Take care. Maria Sieg, Administrator Public Health, discussion and or decision to approve the recommendation from the Health Board to hire a physician's assistant at a grade thirty-eight, step five.
Don't move.
I'll second that one.
Five thirty-eight.
Uh, what is that?
Five thirty-eight, step five?
Yeah.
Fifty-four ninety-three.
And what, oh, excuse me, go ahead.
It's a part-time position, right, Maria?
Part-time position.
Totally, fully funded by a grant from the state of Iowa, correct?
A hundred percent.
Thank you.
And the, was the position, um, what, what, what was I saying? Um, opened at a different rate?
Well, this is the, uh, the grade that is set for the position.
This is the grade.
This is the grade that is set for the position, and I came to you earlier this year in June, maybe,
uh, to hire another person and brought the request to you.
That ended up not working out shortly thereafter in the meeting, so this, I'm coming back to you.
Was that the same grade and?
I honestly, I don't remember what step that was, but it was the same grade, yes. So this, uh, this recommendation was taken before the Board of Health, and we've worked with both Dr. Jones and Dr. Perry on setting up a mentorship onboarding program so that we can assure a good transition for a new employee into this role and oversee clinical services for us.
So what, how many more steps are in this grade?
It was eleven.
Is there eleven in this one? Total, yeah, yeah, I see, okay. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, hearing then, motion passes. Good luck, she's gonna come. Okay, uh, committee appointments, Mr. Jorgensen.
Uh, I was at the Southwest Iowa Juvenile Detention Centers meeting, uh, last week. Uh, the biggest issue that they're facing right at the moment, uh, is finding a way to give local, uh, Council Plus City policeman access to the facility in case they have insurance or something that needs to be. Quick, sooner than later. Uh, and also, uh, last night I was at an event, uh, it was Good News Global, was the name of the organization that had this event, and it was based on ministry, uh, to those inmates in our county jails. Uh, they, uh, they, uh, go to the, uh, local county jails, Douglas, Sarpy, Bonnewanomi County, uh, and minister to those inmates there, and it was quite an event. Uh, uh, County Attorney Matt Wilber was there, along with me. Um, I am going to be asking the board to invite a spokesman in at some point and just give us cover, an, an update on their, their mission and what they're doing in, in our county jail. It's very, very impressive, so.
I spent some time helping with some trails up at Hitchcock. Then Conservation one evening, then Whitea, then I was here. And, uh, ATV trail meeting. Does anybody know what's happening with our courthouse, the elevator?
Elevator.
The incorrect elevator when they built?
Kristen's probably the best one to ask about that.
Okay.
It should have been corrected a long time, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay. Well, now, now we'll do it.
Yeah. Susan?
Um, I attended the Whitea Board meeting last Wednesday morning, and then on Thursday, I attended the Golden Hills RC and D Department Staff Retreat. They invited board members to go up in the morning for the morning sessions, and I attended.
Yeah, I was at, uh, Caring for Your Communities, some outreach program that's dealing with the homeless issue that we have in, um, mostly in Council Plus, but I think there's some other ones that we have, some community issues. Uh, and Thriving Family Alliance, um, meet and greet, uh, for the CB candidates. Spent, um, multiple times and days on either Wabash or Bungie or Pioneer Trail with, uh, uh, new truck yard sale we got going on out there. So, um, and then I found out we have a roadside park in Griswold tend to never knew existed, but it's really not our park. I think it's the DOT's, as soon as I get the proper documentation. But there's some people that are camping there that are living there, so. I did.
And I do. You mean a truck yard sale?
Well, they got trucks going every which way out there and.
Oh, finding your trail?
Oh, yeah, coming, coming from south there. Speed, there's people speeding and.
Yeah. There's got some complaints.
Yeah, just want to, gonna get some more, right, so. Okay. We're going into public comment.
Dawn Anderson. Oh, yeah, there's been one night, three, I'm sorry, I had a forty straight call, but, um, so, you know, as you all know, I'm a rural resident, and I talked to you about it before. Um, the issues a lot of people were having with their wells, luckily, we've had a great amount of rain and have come out of that drought system. And I know you all are aware of the water in here, um, and where the water towers have been and the issues with the local waters such as that. So it's very interesting that, um, I've been trying to gather some facts to present you all with for the last couple of weeks. It's very interesting that Summit was in here today, um, fighting about their water usage. So, uh, just, just remember that she is the PR lady, um, and it's her job to, uh, make everything move. Uh, so, you know, tech giants, and I know you guys have also talked a lot about AI recently as well, and so uh, just to kind of give you some factoids from plenty of different, uh, reputable sources, tech giants have significantly increased their water needs for cooling data centers due to the escalating demand for online services, services and generated AI product. AI ser- server cooling consumes significant water with data centers using cooling towers and air mechanisms to dissipate heat, causing up to nine liters of water to evaporate per kilowatt of energy used. Which is also something to remember when, um, Summit is speaking about that they can reuse water. If you are putting water on something that is really hot, a lot of that water evaporates. So, um, the US relies on water-intensive thermoelectric plants for electricity indirectly increasing data center's water footprint with an average of forty-eight or forty-three point eight liters per kilowatt hour withdrawn for power generation. Each time an AI tool is prompted, like with a yes, yes or no question, there's a cost that few consider. Researchers believe that each string of prompts uses roughly sixteen ounces of water at data centers that house these AI systems. So when you're asking ChatGPT, even a simple yes or no question, you're using, uh, like the water bottle I'm looking at at Marion's desk. So just remember that in public when you're asking ChatGPT to create your grocery list. Um, according to a recent study report by Lawrence Berkeley National Laboratory, the twenty-twenty-three direct, direct water consumption by data centers in the United States, home to about forty percent of the world's data centers, is estimated at roughly seventeen point five billion gallons of water. Assuming a fifty percent consumption ratio, that means thirty-five billion gallons of water withdrawal are about point three percent of the total public water supply for the contiguous United States. A medium-sized data center can consume roughly up to a hundred and ten million gallons of water per year for cooling purposes, equivalent to the annual water usage of approximately one thousand households. I live in Oakland, and we have barely over one thousand households in that, within the city limit. So one small, one medium data center uses more water than we do. Carbon capture proj- projects can use a significant amount of water, with some estimates suggesting that a large-scale project like the Summit Carpet Solutions Pipeline could require over three billion gallons of water annually in the state of Iowa alone, primarily from deep aquifers. The water is needed for cooling and for the carbon capture process itself, often involving the, the use of water to separate CO2 from the other gases. This high water demand has raised concerns about the sustainability of our aquifers, especially in areas with existing water stress, such as Potawatomi County. Summit Carpet Solutions, in twenty, uh, twenty-twenty-four report estimated that the pipeline project would need approximately three point three six billion gallons of water annually in Iowa. And the reason I have spoken with you guys a few times about water usage is because I know that you have the power to come up with some sort of resolution or something along those lines to restrict how much water usage could be used by, whether it be carbon pipelines or data centers or any of these, uh, you know, Google, we've got a new data center coming in using our Potawatomi County water sources, um, you know, I don't know how familiar you are, right now the point is on the water crisis. Uh, you know, uh, Apoka businesses were tremendously impacted. Water is a huge issue, so I am just begging you all to look at possible ordinances to keep these for-profit companies from using the water for our people. It could be huge.
Council Plus.
Yes, I, I know that, I know that, but I know the, the county itself, because they're running out of space in Council Plus, right? So the rest of my, my interest when it comes to also, Summit, if there's any, uh, ordinances you can do, limiting the water usage or rejecting water usage in potential economy, you know, that would be incredible.
Okay, thank you. Okay. There's nobody else, is there?
Okay.
Uh, closed session.
I'll make a motion, go into closed session, go into Iowa, go to five, five, twenty-one, one, fair and one, third seed, ready? For potential litigation.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody. And I saw the, when I saw the, uh, gender pop up, was, oh, I was taking care of my, oh. It's kind of like, it's been caring about.
Bye.
Supervisor Shay?
Aye.
Supervisor Dorgensen?
Aye.
Supervisor Miller?
Aye.
Supervisor Whitman?
Right.